Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Brookline Select Board Meeting.
Okay.
Good to know.
Welcome. I'd like to call to order the August 2nd, 2023 regular Brookline Select Board Meeting. The time is 6:33. Present in the room are select board members Paul Madelinski, Samara Zewick, Stan Noga, Chris Mello, myself, Dot Maggio, a recording clerk Vanessa Ballou, our highway supervisor, Everett Mark Phillips. On Fact TV, we see Oliver Ames and I also see Chris Daly. And I think that is what we have currently at this time. Any changes to the agenda?
Other than those things that I had emailed, if you're willing to accept them at this point in time.
Yes, when you do your report or any other part of the select board, we can, that's where we'll fill that in. The changes to the agenda. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to introduce our scheduled member of the public, who's Oliver Ames. He at the town party last month, the 22nd, he came up and we talked a little bit and he's interested to look at the mitigation. I thought he came online tonight and introduced himself to the other select board members. Tell us a little bit about yourself and what your aspirations are and how you would like to help out the town.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me, Oliver Ames, 872 Grassley Brook Road. Yeah, like Dot said, got connected at the town party and then with the flood on the 10th, just have been trying to figure out how we can get more involved, my wife Emily and myself. And then Chris Daly and her wife Leah live across the street from us. So we're really just relatively new to town and just trying to get involved with the planning commission for me personally and then more broadly in any way that we can, whether it's in the mitigation area post-flood or with roads. And we know there's a lot going on in the town and as Dot mentioned to me, a little short staffed in certain areas. So excited to lean in and help in any way we can. But Dot, I guess in terms of just next steps, I was just curious, you sort of alluded to it when we spoke, but like with the planning commission, like what does that process look like in terms of formally joining that? And then when are you thinking of kicking off kind of the planning cycle?
All right, Samara, she's got her hand up.
I have my hand up because she, I just, I was asked to look into what was going on with our planning commission by August 1st at our last meeting. And we are definitely looking for new planning commission members. The best person to get in contact with to find out about it is Barbara Bourne. I can give you her phone number. It's 802-365-4145. Now, originally there were, I won't give you the whole background, there were three members on it. I think I'm going to hop on the commission as the board liaison, if that's all right with everybody. Okay, and it's, number is 802-365-
Yep, I got it. We spoke at the party as well. I'll definitely connect with her.
Okay, just let her know you're interested, what we've talked about because one of the board members has young children, one of the commission members has younger children. And so we're figuring, we're going to plan to start up in September, but we want to get it on everyone's calendar soon. So I called, I tried to call Charlie Ezekiel, but he was, he didn't answer. So I'll email him and then I'll try again. I talked to Dan Clickguard and he apologizes that he doesn't really have time. You were right, Stan, but I think it's always good to talk to people. So I was glad I did and he said he wants to help in the future. He thought he would have more time. I don't know, did you meet Dan at the town party?
Yeah, he lives just up Parker Road from us. We know them well. So yeah, that sounds great. I think I only have one other question, Dot and team, just before it gets to the next agenda item, which is I started engaging a bit with hazard mitigation just because FEMA came out to our house and we filed like an individual homeowner claim with them. But in terms of like best process for sort of engaging with the state and like from the town perspective and the homeowner perspective, like do you have any thoughts there? And like I completely understand that September makes sense for the town to kick off the planning cycle, but in terms of like the FEMA, like major disaster timing, like the time is of the present.
Earlier. Already kind of, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. We're sorry.
Stan, you were at a FEMA workshop and we have how many days since the disaster to, we'll go for the town?
We have to register with FEMA for the latest disaster within 30 days from the disaster declaration date. And that date was the 14th of July. So I haven't counted on the calendar what, what, what's going to constitute 30 days in August, but it's somewhere around the 13th, 14th or 15th that we in fact have to register.
Which we will, it's a checklist.
I, I, so at the meeting yesterday, the lady who heads it, the Vermont Emergency Management Division, left the email to contact. I emailed her today. I've gotten some answers back. I need to get, the town needs to get the two individuals that the emergency, that BEM and FEMA can contact. I believe Dot's going to be one. I am willing to be the other if there's no other volunteer. I have taken a, have attended a few minutes, meetings that is. So we, if all goes well, I would hope to be able to do that tomorrow or Friday. We got to provide them with our SAM's number, our tax filing number and a copy of the town's insurance policy that covers general damage and so on and so forth. And that should take, I would imagine several minutes. And, and so we'll then be so-called registered. From that date and time, I mean, it's tomorrow or Friday, generally within 14 days from that date, the town will get a call from FEMA, a five-minute phone call, setting up a date and time to meet with the individuals in town that are going to be handling, interfacing with FEMA. And they'll set up a date to come in. And then all of the data that we thus far have collected, in terms of Marcus sat down and Dot's prepared an input sheet to document the hours, the location, the longitude, GPS readings, et cetera. They will come in and input all that data for every single site that had damage in, in the town of Brookline and get the process going. They appear to be a little more time sensitive than in the past. Their software now has a little icon up in the upper right-hand corner, if I remember this correctly. And when you see that lit, it's either red, pink or yellow, you click on it and it'll tell you what it needs and what date you need it for. And they're now, if you don't get it to them by the date and time, you can't put it in. It's like if we don't get it registered in that 30-day time period, which we will, they will not allow you a second opportunity to register.
Yeah, I've gone that sense as well and I just want to be as supportive as I can just because I know that it's, it's pretty strict.
So I wouldn't anticipate you getting further contact unless you were promised differently by the people that you, that visited you for another three, possibly four weeks?
Yeah, that sounds good. Do you feel, Dot, like you've gotten all the documentation from our neck of the woods? That was pretty badly hit that you need to register and sort of enter the next phase?
Yeah, I know Mark has gone around town with AOT. Did people go around?
Yeah.
Mark went around with the Agency of Transportation about a week, 10 days ago. And they looked at certain areas and estimated the town damage to be approximately 30,000 to 40,000?
20 to 30.
20 to 30,000 dollars. And it doesn't include any mitigation. And what we're looking for is, and as you requested, to upsize some culverts and such, which we'd be in addition to. So we hope to be able to, once we get the initial part done, we look at mitigation. Since the road did not collapse, you know, that, that would have put a new culvert in much easier, but the road didn't collapse. And so that would mean to be to deconstruct the road to do it. So they, they would look at that a little bit differently. And so that's what we have to convince them. And you sent us some great pictures. So it's obviously that, that, your house and Chris Daly's house, which we went past that day is pretty significantly hit.
That sounds great.
Last Friday, met with a gentleman here at the town office. He frankly didn't have a lot of specific knowledge. His basic function was to have a face here in town to just say they're interested in hearing what happened, et cetera, et cetera. And in the conversation with him, with you and mine, I pursued a particular avenue that he had mentioned. And I hope I'm not disclosing this prematurely, but he didn't commit to anything, but he did say that there is a program through FEMA where your utilities are in so-called the basement and it would be who, a homeowner who's had damage to move them up to the first floor. They will consider funding that particular change to the house. He also said that if it's a reoccurring scenario, which I believe your property is, they would be willing to entertain the concept of lifting up a house two feet. I don't know if that would put you out of danger or whether you'd still be in danger. But when I heard that, I-
Yeah, that's fantastic. We had six inches of- Yeah, we had six inches of water in the first floor, so two feet would be the difference.
Uh huh, okay.
I would love to continue to pursue that avenue in particular. That sounds pretty unique. And I think Chris and Leah would feel the same way.
So we appreciate your interest and certainly could use an extra set of brains here and there for helping us get through some of these, you know, this paperwork and such. So I think that would be a-
Yeah, that sounds great. I'll reach out to Barbara and just let us know how we can help.
Yeah, just one shed of light. I got an email this afternoon from Wyndham Regional, Marg O'Gia, who wanted to interface with Samara and myself on the hazard mitigation thing and Dot.
The brick grant?
Uh, no, yes, it is. It's relevant. That's the funding of what it is. But they had to, had the hazard mitigation update plan she wants to start on in August if possible.
That, so that, that would be, that would be something that would be kind of, think of it like a separate committee of the planning, in the planning area. So I don't-
Well, hazard mitigation.
Hazard mitigation. So if you're, if he's interested, I don't see why we couldn't include him, right?
Absolutely. Well, that's my, I, I feel like you do, you know?
Yeah, the more the merrier.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I think that hazard mitigation plan is something that's done every five, six, seven years.
Five years.
Yeah, and so it's time for us to look at the whole town, not just this particular storm.
Yeah, of course, Honey Mountain, all the different areas. Yeah, that, we would love to be involved with that and sounds like in this case, good, good timing.
Yeah, they very much overlap. So you'd be instrumental in involvement in both categories.
Right, and we have a grant that would help with the Wyndham Regional supporting the, the process of putting out that grant. And if you happen to go to the New Fane website, they just completed their hazard mitigation plan and we reviewed it. It's approximately 87 pages long. The town of Brookline has a slightly outdated hazard mitigation plan because we have, we were under contract for it, but we haven't started it yet. It's going to start this month.
Could I get involved with that in some way, shape or form?
We would love to.
Yes, yes.
Do we have your contact information?
I believe so, but what would-
I think I saw it on the 211 summary that the Vermont Emergency Management sent out.
Yeah, I did. I definitely filled that out.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, let me know how to sort of get off the ground with that and get involved. And thank you for the time and the warm welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Can I just say one thing?
Mark, Mark wanted to add something. Mark?
So just before I got here tonight, I got a phone call from Kim Ray and he had called and found out he could register for damage at Floodbrook School. They have registration.
Yes, but it's for individuals, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And this-
He went up there and they're meeting him tomorrow morning between 10:30 and 11:00 on his dad's bridge.
Okay.
To determine-
Where did you say? At what school?
Floodbrook School in London, Darren.
Floodbrook School.
Yeah, Route 11.
For registration.
Yeah, and there's-
I think they, they used to be going out of town.
Okay.
Towards-
This is off topic.
So Natasha is a damaged structure that's both in the town right of way and private. And so I'm going for curiosity to see what this FEMA representative has to offer for the homeowner as well as the town.
All right, because you'd be involved in the mitigation plan anyway, so that would be the information.
Thank you, Mark. That's a good idea.
All right, so we all try to pull our weight where we can and show up at different areas. We, it would be great that you can share the effort towards this.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thanks, Chris.
Any, any other unscheduled members?
Chris, have a question or something?
No.
No?
Okay.
Okay, if not, we'll move on to reviewing the improved minutes from July 19, 2023, which I just had. Okay, any edits on page one of five? Are you scrolling on? Any edits on page two of five?
Question.
Yes, you have a question?
On the payroll or payers, the payroll warrant 2403, is that right?
2403 and the payroll-
Are we considering 2400?
I'm looking at payroll warrant 2405.
Is the numbering, because the numbering-
The payroll?
Yeah, it's the numbering of the payroll. So-
Are you sure it's three, oh three? Because when I got an email, it was oh five.
This is, he's looking at-
Oh, the minutes, the minutes, I'm sorry.
It should be 2304, 2403.
Yes, yeah.
It's correct.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Move on.
I'm sorry, I'm in another world here. I'm sorry.
Anything on page three of five?
I have one thing, just in, number seven, item C.
Lady's Commission?
Yes, standing, SN recommended scheduling a meeting on August 1st if possible.
That is, you're right.
Well, you were, what Stan Noga recommended, I contact Dan Clickguard by August 1st.
Good catch. I thought that I had that and I-
And they did.
Just placed it.
Like the men, you're telling Dan Clickguard by August 1st.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise it sounds like you recommended scheduling a planning commission meeting. It wasn't there. Which might upset the planning commission because-
Why there's a pause? I was, I did a noon lunch meeting with the LCT. They frown on select board members being on a planning committee. They want us to stay away and help, but we can, but we can participate. We have to be careful.
I do, yeah, I hear you. Because I know, because we have to approve it as well.
Yes.
But I will not, I will neither recuse my, I, I can mind my pleas and choose.
I know.
Until they get more people, I would volunteer to be involved.
Any items on page four or five? Any items on page five or five? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes presented with one edit for Wednesday, July 19, 2023, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstained?
We need a second.
Oh, second?
Yes.
Make a motion. Who would second it? Second it by Bruce. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you Vanessa.
Yeah, pretty official and formal. Right on.
All right, accounts payable warrant. I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant 2406 dated August 2nd, 2023 in the amount of $12,815.79. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan. Any discussion?
The only thing I noted, because I'm watching it and this doesn't affect the amounts. There are two things I noted. One, that there are some things in categories that I think need to be reclassed. So for example, the one I caught is Nemrick, New England Nemrick bills are in charge to computer service maintenance. They used to have their own annual licensing fee. It's, so I don't think that impacts it and I am happily, it's within my particular skillset to go talk to the treasurer and get these corrected.
Thank you.
But additionally, I want to make sure that they're separating out FEMA contract stuff. If not in the ledger, then to keep a separate spreadsheet. Because I noticed that a lot of the things are charged FEMA 21, FEMA 23 and it's the full amount. I'd like to make sure that they're separating them out and I'll talk to Melissa. I don't care if it's in the ledger or if they can keep a separate spreadsheet, either would be acceptable, I think.
Okay, sometimes we have been asked for copies of checks and so-
Copies of checks will, you can give a copy of a check that's paying for two parts. And I'm not clear that that's what's happening or if it's just the way, they didn't know which one it was. But I will talk to both Judy and Melissa and figure that out and make sure that it's clear. Because, and if you have a check that's payable for two, for like two projects, you have, you supply them with the invoice and it will break out which part is which. And you can do that on a spreadsheet easily.
Okay, great. So, because I'm looking at the invoice itself and there are some notations on it, yeah?
Yeah, so as long as, yeah, as long as we have the, but expired, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2406 in the amount of $12,815.79, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Hearing none, the motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2405 dated August 2nd, 2023 in the amount of $1,718.80. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2405 for $1,718.80, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to pass it around. I'm sorry, I forgot to pass it around. It's one, and then the other.
You know, it's the end. I know. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next item. Here is under new business. I don't know, maybe I should have put it under unfinished business because on page two of five of the minutes from the July 19th, we tabled for the discussion for purchasing a, possibly purchasing a truck for the town. And so there was some discussion about what kind of process and that we would do for purchasing additional equipment, where we'd get funding from, so on and so forth. And if we were going to even pursue it, we probably need to vote whether or not we're even going to follow through on that. I'll let everybody go. I just want to go through a couple of things. It's very easy for us, for me to go and do a search, whether it be Craigslist or other sites for, for different pieces of equipment and trucks. You found one for 32 and I found one for 15 and I found one the other one for 22. Okay, I also want to point out that you don't always just have to think about purchasing a vehicle. There is the option, and I talked to Alta about purchasing a hydraulic lift on a trailer, trailer. And I did pick, print out if anybody wants to review it. What we, what we're talking about, something that could be pulled behind a excavator. I know Mark using his personal vehicle is a concern of his. Now that we have a wheeled excavator, that really should be used to go around town after storms to review damages because if there isn't piece of, if something is damaged after a storm, to have the in piece of equipment that would repair it right away would be the most logical thing. So you wouldn't have to use your car for that. As far as bringing gravel, we don't expect you to be going to any gravel pit and selecting the gravel. It's the mass, the amount that we use is brought to the town yard. But if you could have something that was three, four, five or six cubic yards as a dump trailer, you could then attach it, you could fill it, put it on the back of your wheeled excavator, go to your site, chalk it, dump it and, and do your repairs, the smaller repairs. We're not expecting you to, to, to do that. And so you can purchase any, anything from used to about $5,000 or $6,000 to brand new for about $12,000, six, six yards of gravel. So I do have that. There's several places within 50 miles here of this, of Brookline. So I'm just wanted to say that that is an option. And I think that if we do want to consider instead of buying a 20 or 25-year-old vehicle, if we were just looking at doing the repairs, something else that could be sold. You could buy it for cash with ARCA funds. I don't think we should be spending non-appropriate tax money on things. I think we need to repair our budget and not count on FEMA reimbursements to purchase anything. But that's my opinion and as such, I will open that door to other members. Anybody else want to?
You guys want to say something?
I'll go ahead. I guess my feeling about it is similar to yours, Dot. I also feel pretty strongly that until we have an additional, well, there's two ways to go about it. There are several people in town who have dump trucks, Archie, Sam Bourne, Tanner, why not? You know, so I don't know that it's necessary for most instances to have another dump truck that the town own it. And because if Mark, if Mark is driving the excavator, he obviously can't do the truck at the same time unless he's discovered a way to find himself. And so there should, you know, there should be a separate person, I think, to go with any new equipment. That's just what I think. The other thing that I also think we need to do is do an analysis of the, you know, how many miles are actually utilized, how much of it is going to be emergency work related, which would be covered potentially mostly by grant money as opposed to just regular routine maintenance. And so would we really use a dump truck for routine maintenance in our town? I don't know, you know, and I understand the need to haul, haul gravel from time to time while you're working. And so the trailer sounds like a good option to me.
I mean, I guess along that line, I'd like to ask Mark, if there were, I mean, how would that work? Would that, would that work, having a trailer?
A good trailer? I think the trailer would be a good asset.
A good trailer? I think the trailer would be a good asset. It'd be very usable to move. Anything around that needed moving to definitely. Like, need the cheaper choice of the two. The only. Thing that, I guess I could say. It would work really on the level ground in Brooklyn, slight hills. Like, button mountain, it would probably. I don't know how much stress it would put on the excavator, pulling extra weight or coming downhill with extra weight. Could be my only concern, but I, I do feel your trailer would be very handy. On the other side of the picture. Basically, I guess, in the future down the road, I was thinking of being able to use a town vehicle to check roads instead of my own vehicle. For wear and tear purposes. So, the town of Athens, they have a very similar truck. Pretty much every town owns a smaller dump truck, and so they own the large dump trucks. And the town guys have to check their roads as often as I do. Make sure that it's passable and you do a check. And when they get to where they take one of these one-time trucks and go out, check roads, and they carry. Cars and all equipment with it. So it's, it's a common piece of equipment that most towns do own. And.
Is, is it something, one thing, one other thing I thought of is. And this was something that was actually suggested by Chris Campini. Is that small, are small towns that have, don't have the budgets that larger towns have, or towns with larger tax bases have? Have we considered, can we shake, can we work out agreements to share resources?
That would be a nice feature as well. I'm all for that. You want, just one more argument. Some of the towns are zoning, they use the, like, Loody Bill truck. You know, it's approximately thirty miles when, when check, whenever I go out on the roads to. Check the roads both directions, you have to come back as well as, you also, it quickly, approximately thirty miles one way. And. So I do utilize small amounts of material, which when I need that, I can't really have. A large truck deliver a yard or two, so that would be a benefit to a trailer or a small truck. The, in comparison, I, I don't know, most trucks in the past, I, I know. Got seventy five dollars an hour for trucking fee, and I believe it's gone up. To a hundred or bigger trucks, maybe more. But on average, if, if you hired one of the local, same trucks from a local vendor. For an eight-hour day, a hundred bucks an hour, that's eight hundred dollars a day. If you own the truck.
But how many days would we need that truck?
Every day.
At eight, at eight hundred dollars a day for three hundred and sixty five days a year?
If you, I'm saying if you hired a truck out. Or, I'm just giving this as an example.
Right.
Eight hours in a day. And yes, there would be a lot of days I could utilize one anyhow with the FEMA repairs. But I'm just saying. If you rented one one day and it was eight hundred, and there was lots of other days, we would still need the same truck.
Right.
Eight hundred dollars a month. Is a lot less than eight hundred and only there.
I see what you're saying, as far as that part.
Yeah, I mean, if we had it, it could be used in many ways for.
I, I, there's no doubt that it would be an asset. I'm, we're just concerned right now that we may not be able to, to, to fund, to, to do that this time. I'd like to continue getting survey and then maybe having two select boards, so we don't have a quorum, really do some deep research on this. And I think it might be something that would need to go on, on, on the warrant town, town meeting.
Yeah, what, what I think, what I think is, is if, if people come up with potential costs and we have hard numbers. Then I'm happy to do the financial analysis, because the analysis, I mean, I've gone through it before. And, you know, you have to consider in addition to the ownership, depreciation, registration, upkeep, insurance. There's a maintenance, fuel costs. You know, these are all things that when you rent it, most of them are covered, probably not fuel costs, but. So I just think there needs to be a more. Concrete analysis done.
And, and I'm concerned about if we're using, if we use ARCA funds, that would be one straightforward way.
That would be.
But i- if we're doing non-budgeted appropriations from other categories, I, I don't think that would, that would fly very well, personally.
I think you're right.
But.
I, I feel like Samara does, and apparently you, that an analysis, black and white figures. Would be the appropriate way to really pass judgment on any process that's put in place.
Yeah, and Doc. Can I ask a quick question? Just how soon, what's the deadline for using the ARCA funds?
Twenty sixteen or twenty twenty six?
Thanks. So I mean, that's. Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a black and white analysis.
Right. And like I said, you can move anywhere from six thousand to twelve thousand dollars. You can get a trailer depending upon twenty twenty four. Or a used one for, for, for my flat.
If you get a used one, you know, that I, I've been kind of loosely keeping track of figures over the last couple of years. And if, if there was one that was reasonable, it probably would pay for itself for pretty darn near the first year. So, you know, on the other hand, you know, the, the concept of, well, how many days do we really need it? You know, the things, the kinds of questions that Samara just brought up are critical.
No, I, I mean. I would use it, this is my idea, as well, to check roads, which that fits basically every three to five days. So it would be checking roads as well as nuns for hauling material. And I realize, you know, you can't run one and run the other, but. The other day, I did a repair on Parker Road, which I used my bicycle to.
Oh, wow.
You're not healthy.
I had them both at the same site, and at the end of the day, I'll open that. But, again, my dad used to help me a lot when needed. And I do have people that have asked, you know, if you ever need a hand per day, or.
Can you identify some people? Because my thought would be, if we can get them into the employee system, you know. I, I mean, that would be ideal, in my view, because I know your dad used to help you, and he can't now. So you should pick someone new.
Yeah, no, I, I've got a few people in mind that, when the timing is right, that we need them.
Yeah, and, and if you want to like, to me, I would explore it now and find out how much time they are willing to be available. And then we can get them into the system and make sure all their paperwork is done.
And then you can call on them as.
Then, and then it won't be like a fire drill to get them on board. Thinking like an administrative person.
Yep.
Yeah. Excellent, excellent idea.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. It's quite clear to me, and I hope it is everybody else, that we had a town meeting. That man over there deserves no credit, other than a wheelbarrow. Excuse me. I went through COVID vaccines, I'm still coming out of it, so. If I don't speak loud enough, just tell me, because I'm feeling that great. Had no food in me the whole day, eat a water. I'll deal with that in order reserves. There's some things that I wrote down some notes here of things I agree with and, and a bunch I don't agree with. The first thing I agree with. And, and Samara has addressed it quite strongly, you haven't passed, is Mark having a second person. I'm kinda. Pissy about that, because he's out, if he doesn't have any backup, and we get into a, I guess, from, from a safety standpoint, I think he needs a certain amount. And we need a budget for that, when we come around to budget time and, and the fall. Okay, couple of things I really. Okay, renting from others. I don't like that at all. To me, that's. That's just from a cost standpoint, it doesn't make any sense at all. Because if we were to buy that particular truck that Mark had found, which would be five hundred and fifty dollars a month. Payman. We're looking at six thousand dollars he used to pay, he used to pay for just cutting the grass. And that money could come out of summer, summer services, summer contract services fund. We've already, we've got a fund of thirty six thousand dollars for next year, and in light that we have. Mark with the excavator, that's gonna go down a lot.
So you're saying get a loan?
Yep. We're looking at five hundred and fifty dollars a month, and I think that based on.
What, how long, what's?
Five years. It was five and a half percent, I don't know if it's changed. I, I talked to the guy yesterday, but I didn't ask him again. What, if, if the interest rates change, of course, the feds bumped it another quarter percent last week, so I don't know the exact percentage, but it's in that ballpark.
Financing, what amount?
You can finance the whole thing. You don't have to, you don't have to put it down.
But what is the dollar amount that would be financed? How can they come up with five hundred dollars unless you know the amount financed to begin with?
What's the total cost?
That's what I said. I, I based it on thirty three thousand dollars.
Okay.
One hundred percent, without, without working on the price, without any doubt, down, just.
And if this person or entity give you anything, anything in writing?
Not on the financing, but, but Mark got a, like, what was it, like, a sales agreement? That was back in Maine. He's still using this truck, which is in beautiful shape. I'm gonna dovetail all for a second. Because Doc also found the truck on Craigslist.
Yeah, I found a couple.
Okay, well, what I did was, is I sent the copy of your email to Mark. Said, Mark, where you picking this? And Mark, you can answer to, you know what I'm talking about. So respond to that one, that's in London.
Yeah, so coincidentally, Doc, my sister went there to purchase a vehicle.
Oh, a raise?
Couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Ron's out of.
Ron's.
And so I offered her the ride up while she purchased her vehicle, and when I got there, we did the deal. And she got plates on, went to drive away. I said, I just want to over and look at this truck, and.
Oh, you saw it?
It happened to be that one. And I thought, boy, that's a truck, trucker. I'd like that for townwork, and. I went over and, and looked at it, looked under it, and it was too far gone. It's rested.
What, too far?
Very rested, the cab was, I don't think it would go five years.
Okay, interesting. And, and again, there's another one here.
Looks great, but it, it just, it's evidently been installed.
Yeah, so that.
That one I need to share.
So me, the idea of sharing or renting from others is special. We often have arguments that I don't like. The renting from others, of course. Archie, whatever, here we go back to the same problem that we've always had, where we spend too much money on out servicing. Our equipment, when if we owned it, would be a lot less expensive. That's the first thing. Now, the sharing part, I really don't like, because what happens if we have another hurricane? What happens if we have another disaster? And ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna have it. We've already had three in the last two years. It's gonna happen again. And so that means we're gonna share our vehicle with New Fane or Townsend or somebody else. Well, if they're gonna use it, oh, well, we can't have it now?
I think it's worth having a conversation.
What's that?
I think it's worth having a conversation with other towns.
Okay, I'm just saying for five hundred and fifty dollars a month, we can get that man a truck with, what was it, fifty four, sixty four thousand miles on?
Fifty four, it was the last.
Clean as a whistle.
To share personnel, for heaven's sake.
Dump body.
Depend on the agreement.
Depends on if they want to do it in an emergency, who are they gonna take care of first? I keep looking at it as a vision, that if we have a problem. Who's gonna help us? All we're gonna have to start running out, running out of equipment again, and these big major costs. But if we set ourselves up in a correct way, and I'd like, Mark, if a little bit more, if you could. Clarify to everybody the difference between a trailer behind in terms of youth and what you could use it for compared to the dump body that you looked at. The versatility part.
Yeah, so, yeah, I believe they would both be competitive. Both very good benefits, just the. The truck is probably rated more for being loaded up and down hills. Where I'm not so sure on the excavator with that much more weight. When you come to a hill with the excavator, it, it gears way down and slow and. And holding back coming downhill is also another. Feature where I'm not sure extra weight behind it pushing would be good for it. I mean, down here on the valley, it would probably work well.
Okay, but the versatility, go ahead, Mark.
I just wanted to say one other thing that came to my mind is. Because we get our, our, most of our gravel materials from our local vendors, the S Clark family. They give us a better deal on material as well as trucking, because they're local. If we go out of town, then we're paying extra trucking and extra for materials to be delivered. The Clarks are, they're not open to the public for gravel sales. It's mostly for their own personal usages. So they would, they've allowed me to go in their pit to get materials that I need for repairs. But I don't know if they would just let anybody else truck out of there for the town.
We wouldn't expect them to, no.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if we were to use other vendors.
What if, what if we could work out a deal like with someone like Tanner Wynaut or Sam Bourne, who both have dump trucks?
But, but also, I guess, Spock might work out something for us.
Yes, or with Archie.
There, there are.
I said, there's three, three options.
A lot.
Three people.
Flivered gravel.
Five hundred and fifty dollars a month, we have our own dump truck.
That would require.
Five hundred and fifty dollars a month, that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
We run the roost on the town. We, we, we run the roost if we own a truck. If we start relying on other people, it costs more, and we're at their whim, and the story, that's my.
We'll do an analysis, and we'll see if we're, we'll see if you're right.
You know?
Uh, there was a comment made at one of the last two SLIF board meetings that. I think you were under the impression that we needed to go to the town to get approval for this kind of thing. And I believe Bruce said, no, we don't. I did go back and look and researched that a little bit. I did find a printout. Yeah, I think if we go five years, we're gonna have to go to the town to get an approval, if I, if I read, but you're saying five years.
Under five, five years.
Under five, so it's gotta be less than five years.
Well, it says.
So, anyway, anyway, yeah, for a long. So, I guess, other than saying that if, if it is less than five years in term, you can do it without having to go to the town's people to get it. I get option, and I'm not saying that we should do that. I'd like to see the figures of an analysis first.
If the improvements. Or assets are refinanced for a term of five years or less.
Five years exactly.
Or less.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we, we are very responsible, because, well, we are trying to be. But, you know, we, we have a lot of this FEMA money we haven't gotten in, and I don't want us to be like, looking to pigeonhole it in other areas. I want to make sure it goes back to the areas that we took the money from, like prepaid and paving account repaid. Because we, we overextended ourselves the past couple of years, because we did not have an emergency fund. And I think that's something that we will do when we do budget this year. That has to get changed.
That has to be done next.
No, I'm just saying, as long as you're not looking at taking FEMA money for it, that, that was my, my concern.
In fact, that's another argument discussion.
So right now, I'd like to, I'll charge a committee. Is there two select board members that would like to get involved in doing research on the financial?
What's there, be specific, what's there to research?
Well, to research additional equipment, and look, research the cost of maintenance, looking at, Samara, what else?
I can do the spreadsheet.
I can do the spreadsheet if other people give me the numbers. So, for example, we know the cost of the truck. The interest rate.
I'll recall them.
We need to know, we need to know how much, how much fuel it uses. I can call, if you can get all that, I can. Somebody can call the L C T passive and get, how much would it cost to insure it? You know, we can get the insurance cost, and then I can do a sheet that calculates depreciation on the truck, and then I need hardened, some hard. Truck rental numbers, which I'll have to call a company and do that. I can do it, I can.
Well, I already done work.
And then present it. I, I would like to see some numbers like we did when we were looking at the, um.
Excavator.
Excavator. Yeah, like something like, yeah, or just, yeah, send me your resources and I'll. Who, who did you talk with, who, you know, and what company? Uh, you know, there are other things regarding a loan that one needs to look out for, I mean, the prepaying.
Purchase policy.
Prepaying, that's formed by the right side, hasn't it?
Pretty much, but I wouldn't sign something unless it, I clearly saw that it wasn't there, of course. So, so the comment is, it's a justifiable question to ask. We may get an answer that's satisfying, we may get an answer that's not, depending on who we are dealing with for a loan. That's all I'm saying. Nothing more, nothing less.
And purchase policy, let me ask a question about that, why do that, where does that stand?
The purchase policy? Oh, yeah.
You're buying equipment for, uh, road equipment for the town.
Yeah, we probably should look at our purchasing policy. Because we might need to get bids or something. We might need to set up.
That's what they did for, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen ads in the paper from other towns that have done just that, looking for equipment. We, we might have to try and get three different prices.
Well, we advertise for the prices, you may not get. Take that R F D and hand deliver it to any dealer, car salesman, that you know, including the one that has this.
That's a good concern, a good question.
I have one question about this, uh, the truck, and and that's. Well, in the past, what I've seen happen with Marks worked on our road is. Archie will come with the gravel, dump it, and then Mark will go with a grader and grade. So what's broken down with that system? I mean, yeah, I mean, what's, what's changed?
That's a great, uh, setup that we have with the Clarks, um. Making arrangements to meet me on where I choose to apply gravel, uh. We're, I'm talking about when we don't need. Full loads of gravel. We, we're in this program right now where the state's requiring us to do stone line all of our. Ditches that are hazardous for erosion. It's the Clean Water Act. In my, the year twenty twenty five, I believe, we're supposed to, we have a, a map of the whole town with priority segments. Everything broken down into three hundred foot sections. And each year we have to comply and do a certain amount of these segments, uh. Reditch them correctly, no berms, and apply this ditch stone that doesn't corrode, so.
Those big trucks have to bring it in.
Well, yes, they, there's times the big trucks can bring it in, and and there's a lot of places where the big trucks too big to be there. And a small truck would be handy, um. You, you know, a lot of towns buy their, uh, material in bulk, deliver it to their. Their townyard, and then they shuttle it from there to wherever they need it. So we're actually getting a good deal by having Clarks deliver. Now, another argument is during this July fourteenth, when we had, um. The Clark family was working on a scheduled box covert in the town of Jamaica. Had all their equipment and trucks were up there working, so I didn't even see Archie for the first. Three weeks after, uh, just phone conversations to see how things were going and, uh, some input, so. They're not always available on demand. It's something that has to wait for their schedule to meet mine. So I try to be accommodating whenever they give me. The other thing I just wanna, uh, throw it out here, uh, and again, I, I'm not questioning you to. Run out and spend all of town's money, but, um. It's someday I, I was in hopes I wouldn't have to use my own personal vehicle as a town vehicle, um. I checked the roads, I, I buy the gas, I do get reimbursed, uh, sixty eight cents a mile, I believe.
Sixty two and a half cents. It went up, this year it went up, yeah.
So the basic gas is three sixty two or whatever, and so it doesn't really pay for the gas. It doesn't pay for my brakes, my tires, my front end alignments, my.
Yeah, we, I'm using your personal vehicle, you should bond his personal vehicle as well.
I don't get any kickback, the wear and tear. I'm, I'm in and out the door hundred times a day, slamming the door, slamming the front seat. Uh, wearing his seatbelt, um, the ignition, a lot of times I don't check the start off, I leave it running, if the flash is going. So it's, there's a lot of wear and tear on the personal vehicle that, uh, found as an asset, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's a number one factor I realize. It's that you really should, for sixteen years you've worked for the town. That's, that's a concern.
Yeah, well, it's not a cheaper pickup truck. There you go, I like that idea. A cheaper pickup truck with a trailer. I mean, I'm just.
But in terms of cost, there's not much difference. The versatility of it, also explain what you saw as being the condition of that vehicle that you saw there.
I would say almost like new condition. No rest bubbles, no.
Need to look at that. I think I'm gonna charge the committee, uh, Samara, would you, uh, participate in developing the financial part of it?
Said I would.
Bruce, would you be willing to share? And and if there's other, you're not an elected official, so you, you have information from this or anything else?
Send me all the details.
And and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Jenna, I'll put it together before the next meeting.
All right. Well, I, I think that, I would love to see you have a truck.
Yes, the last thing I think too is I think we should consider if we have, I mean, if, if. If we have the ARPA money and it's an eligible use of ARPA money, I would strongly support using some of the ARPA money.
Absolutely.
If we decide after an analysis that this is appropriate, the purchase is appropriate.
Right.
Well, I think it comes down to a very, very, very basic thing for this town, what comes through, roads and safety. And he needs the equipment. That would go a long way to helping him along.
But he needs another person too.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, I should let find my agenda, my, uh, balancing after the expenses. All right, so, um, so there's no need to, we're gonna proceed in research and develop that research. And, uh, planning for, uh, a vehicle purchase with, uh, the capabilities of moving materials. Okay, anything else before we move on to unfinished business? Okay, uh, ARPA funds discussion that was up on the, uh, end of the minutes from. The draft minutes that we just approved to discuss ARPA funds. I don't think we have anything specific, okay? All right, nothing. All right, storm forty six twenty one is the storm, um. Litigation plans and Putney Mountain work to be completed. Mark, you have, um, any. You, you've gotten an indication from Archie that he would be working on the three culverts in the next ten days or so possibly. In which case, once, once you have like a head, uh, give us a head, heads up. Because we have to notify different agencies that you're gonna be closing the roads between like nine and four, eight and four, or whatever.
Archie thought seven to five.
Seven to five.
And how soon will that happen?
They're on a, a job right now. It sounded like when they finish, they might be in our camp. So this could be.
So, so, um.
But he's gonna let you know before they get here.
Yeah, so, listen, so you guys all realized that there's like way more traffic going over Putney Mountain now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thirty.
It's getting better.
In fact, no, in fact, we had someone come up from Brattleboro and said, should I take route thirty or? Yeah, so will we be able, and Paul and I have run into this thing, we, on Kipling Road, this is not us, this is Dumerson. We got halfway down Kipling Road to Brattleboro and had to turn around and go back because the road was closed.
No, no sign. And you know what else they did?
It was from the other side as well.
Yeah, both sides. Nobody had put up a sign at the opening of the road.
What I do is I, uh, Mark has got a large fire, it's all painted white, ready to go, correct?
Actually, I purchased two brand new.
So we'll have road closure signs, we'll have information about the.
Yeah, as long as that happens, like one at our side and one on their side.
Right, and we notify the fire department, the sheriff's department, the state police, and various Facebook pages.
We were like dumbfounded, like what?
Since we're kind of bad mountain dumbfounded, I was two weeks, two weeks ago, I was in, I was in, uh. In Keene at Skin Clinic in Keene, and a lady there works in Dumerson, and we've come friendly, and I and I were talking to her. And she had, uh, uh, you know how she, hey, east, west, and middle road, she, she lives right on it. They don't do aprons.
Oh, really?
He's had nothing but trouble with the bunk going out, he's had injuries and damage and stuff, and they will accommodate her. So I started looking at it, I go down Middle Road, he said, they don't do aprons.
Yeah, it's odd, that's their, that's odd. That's the standard, yeah, okay.
Um, we continue on with the, uh, uh, Putney Mountain work to be completed, so that's the, that's the three twelve. We haven't heard anything from the paving people, as far as I know, um, yeah, should we call them? Well, we sent them a contract, so they should be sending that back pretty soon. They got sent, uh, Archie sent back his contract for.
Okay, when did the basin contract get sent? Same day that A S Clark did, it was two Fridays ago. Two Fridays ago. Who wants to call Basin and say?
I can certainly call one. Okay, just to ask them if they have a start date.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. So, Putney Mountain work to be completed, um. And the other FEMA work, I think you had, uh, gravel delivered on Bennett Road. Through the Crowley between the Lee property and Culvert thirteen, so that's been done.
Yeah, the, the, it's done.
Uh, the, uh, we don't, we're probably, I think we discussed, and just wanna clarify in front of everyone that. The mitigation of putting in stone inlets at Culverts thirteen and fourteen. Probably a little overkill for mitigation, even though FEMA offered it, the, the way it's set up right now has. Survived the most recent storm in such a way that, uh.
Yeah, and and if we were to upgrade it and the cost exceeds the.
Hundred percent.
A hundred percent, uh, above what it would cost to do the stone, and there wasn't gonna be any kickback to it.
Right, okay, and this is Bennett Road?
Bennett Road on the other side.
That's done, Bennett Road is done, is what I heard, is that, yes?
I, I'm going back over to, uh, clean the runouts on the new section that's freshly gravelled.
So, so you're feeling that Bennett Road part is done then?
It's brought back up to.
Standard, pre, pre-storm condition.
Pre-storm condition.
Okay, so we can say work is completed.
Yeah.
The other mitigation project is the Holland Hillside, that's not been started right now because we've been doing catch up on everything else.
We have, we, uh, we have two loads of gravel delivered over there last week. For the installation of the new culverts, the.
Oh, it's been delivered?
Yeah, Archie had his guys, uh, delivering gravel over there and put it on site. It got away, but it's on site. I have the three culverts, uh, setting at the down garage. Um, I called about the, the concrete, uh, headers for both ends of this project. They have them in stock, and I made arrangements, uh, to have those delivered. So when those get here, I'll be over there installing.
That's done, and Putney Mountain culverts are done, and the paving is done.
But I do have some stone line ditching. But that, the ditches were never finished, so. And because of the amount of traffic, we may have to close per day.
Is the stone line ditching, is that part of FEMA too?
Yes, yeah, that is. We had approximately a half a mile of stone line ditching to complete.
Is that linear or both sides of the road?
No, that's linear, oh, oh, don't say it, of the road. It was where the culverts failed and it ate the road out, the road was put back, the ditches were never re, then.
All right, so then the last, next thing was on item six, storm forty seven twenty, which is the twenty twenty three storm. Uh, Mark has been working on damage inventory forms. Once we get registered for the FEMA portal and they come here. We can start putting in some of the, uh, the data, uh, of, of what we have and, and getting. What, what we repaired up by Athens Road, and then any of the other sites that you, that you already, I started to work on. So that's all in, in the works at this time, so we can move on to, uh. Item C, unless anybody has any questions.
No, there was something that crossed my mind that I wanted to ask about, and it went away again, so. That's okay, if it comes back this fall.
All right, hazard mitigation committee, that, when I say hazard mitigation committee, that's, that's to do the hazard mitigation plan. Um, and, uh, I'll refer to that as the Brick Grant Plan, that's working with Wyndham Regional and Marg, Margot Gia. And Stan, she wants to start sometime in August, um, we can. Look at some dates or whatever.
She, uh, she asked for dates, uh, in her email. I'm not sure if I sent it along to. To, uh, others on this, on the committee here today or not, but, so if we had some ideas to when we might wanna meet. Uh, she's, she said she'd try to be flexible, um. I think now that Oliver is interested, we should reach out to him. To and see what, like, I mean, why don't we compile dates? Cause I'll go home and look at my calendar. Okay. If I can be part of that.
That sounds good. Sure, sure, uh, yeah, I'd like to look, I, I don't have mine. Cause all this is a new page on my calendar, and I'm starting to think of what I have on it.
I refuse to be able to sync my calendars, but.
All right, so, um.
I don't wanna make light of this, but we, we, there isn't much in a town that doesn't have zoning. That is gonna change too much from our current plan, so it sounds like a lot of work. But there's only so much information that's available, and when you look at towns and hazard mitigation plan. Uh, there were modest upgrades there, so it's not gonna be like recreating the world again.
Could we really follow our own mitigation plan since it was developed five years ago? I can't recall really.
Yeah, where, where is the plan yet? If it's not in that cabinet, I have one on my computer that I can email.
Okay, I'll look in the cabinet. I do think that it's also on, should be on our website.
It probably is. Oh, speaking of our website, is that on our agenda? Oh, good.
Okay, all right, so we'll get some dates and, uh, send them to, I, I can tell you when I'm, when I don't have a vehicle, but somebody could pick me up. Then I have my cars to go in the shop, but I'll send you dates that I'm not available. And then Samara or anybody else wants to, you know, send it to Stan, and then Stan, we can set it up with Margot.
Okay.
Okay, um, and yes, if, if there's a reorganization of the planning committee and there's new appointees, we do have to vote them in. Uh, at a select board meeting, so, uh, if somebody wants to, sort of, point. Uh, it should be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and I'll talk to Barb in between. Okay, let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting and I'll talk to Barb in between.
And so they, they would have to meet respectfully to agree that he would be their appointee.
We can probably do something by Zoom or something, we'll do something quick.
Well, and you can brief a little agenda, that guy would have to post so that that meeting.
He can't post anything anyway, right now, cause he could.
Agenda.
Yeah, but he can't post anything from like extra committees. Oh, that's why, he didn't know how to add the energy committee, never mind.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have the, the, yeah, anyway, sorry.
So the planning committee needs to have a brief agenda to just reorganize and then, uh, select uh, any of different appointees, uh, and, uh, chairs, and then get that on the agenda for our next meeting. Okay, uh, reorganization planner, webpage redesign, current questions, current website functionality during transition, I was a little concerned that they, that, that there might be a.
Oh, it'll probably be up until she has the new one ready to.
Right, right.
I mean, usually how it works done is the, the developer makes a whole new one and she's on a whole separate platform.
Mm-hmm.
And so that'll be going on while she's developing it and the old one will still stay up.
Okay.
That's usually how it works.
All right, let's talk about the, um, uh, contract, we put it on, or maybe I didn't put it on here, but we talked about what, do we have to have an, an employee agreement with the website developer?
Um. We can send her when she's, when, I'm thinking. We have it for two wire guys, so Judy can probably send it to her. You know, she's a contractor, right?
She's, I think, it looks like a sole proprietorship, cause there's no.
No, no, I mean, she's not an employee.
Obviously, she's not going to be in order to.
So, probably we can just do that. Yeah.
Do a what?
We can send her, we'll need to get to, in order to pay her and everything. Um, Judy's gonna need like the, the, um, whether she's incorporated or not, and if she's not, she'll have to send her ten ninety-nine anyway. So just have, we'll just have Judy send the standard, um, you know.
I, I, well, I personally, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I, uh, I, I attended again a lunch meeting with the LCT and the issue, uh, one of the, I, I brought the issue up, I says, we're looking at a service provider uh, website in particular, and I said, Ed, I'm interested in knowing, there were two attorneys plus administrator from the state PM, and I said, I would very much appreciate your thoughts on whether or not for something like that, we should have a contract. I said, basically your model service contract, maybe with modifications, but a kind of job that she's gonna be performing her service, and, and, uh, they, the two attorneys looked at each other and they said, of course, we're attorneys, and we're gonna tell you to have a contract. And somebody from another town, there were twelve town people there, and they, one lady says, we hired a van for eight hundred bucks, and that turned out to be a nightmare because we didn't have a contract. So, I, so, so their kind of recommendation is that we, for purposes of some of the other terms and conditions that are part of our normal contract, uh, indemnification, et cetera, et cetera. And they suggest that we utilize a contract. And thinking about it, I could go personally either way. You know, we do have a current provider of computer services, I don't know whether they're under contract, my sense is they're not.
She sent us a contract, didn't she?
She sent us her contract.
Right.
It doesn't include the stuff that we normally have in our contract.
What we should do is probably sign for, if, if we like her contract, then we should engage her, cause we, I looked at her website, and she suggested she used Vernon, and I looked at Vernon's website and it's so nice.
Yeah, I looked at everything too, and she, and she does a nice job.
So, um, I would suggest we do that and then send her our standard non-employee agreement in a very short form standard BLCT contract back with it, and ask her, you know, we realize that you we have this contract with you and.
Now you have this contract.
And now you have a contract with us, you know, just something like that, keep it simple.
I did a contract with the addendum, her stuff a- as, as a possibility for receiving. So, the question is, I, I didn't take enough time to do it, there are other things I've been doing. Uh, I can, we, it sounds like we could, as you say, do her contract and then send our contract and say, your contract is built into our contract, but it has articles that our Vermont Vegas cities and towns has a preference for, things that are not addressed in your contract, would you have a problem executing?
That's a good approach, I bet she won't.
Sure, sure, so do you want me to sign what you have? I have her.
Well, if, if you want to, I mean, we can sign it, I, I brought hers, which I think need your signature on it.
Yeah, right.
And you have her.
It might be overkill, but I think that's a good way, we'll cover all the bases.
So what would you want me, I do have hers here.
Oh, yeah, well.
Hers is incorporated, sign, I would sign hers, I would do them both.
All right, so I mean, you want me to sign that, cause you've incorporated it.
It's a spender and a belt.
There you go.
And she has her, uh, she's extended her contract from, to, uh, all, to August twentieth. She said sixty.
Thirty days.
The other thing on thirty days went to sixty days, she's not.
No, okay, I've got these ninety degrees to each other, hers is on top. And, and.
Okay.
The other contract, which builds her in as an addendum A from the bond.
And then the, the other thing I, I would mention, I, I assume that the deposit that was added should be.
It's in the check, the account's payable, we have a deposit.
I saw that, and was that based on something in her contract?
She required it.
Okay, so, yeah.
Signing of the contract.
So we should give a copy of that to Melissa.
I emailed it to Judy and Melissa this afternoon.
Oh, perfect.
Her contract, and I asked them, is this sufficient for you? I said, it's not executed by anybody other than Marjorie, but it does ask for fifty percent on contract signing.
Yeah, so we've signed it, so now we should give it back before you.
Be that come back.
You know, this is, and then fifty percent.
Yeah.
Cause I saw Melissa's note, I thought.
Cause we've already approved all this.
Knowing, but there is paperwork, so.
Just resign that, okay, good. I.
There's two pages for this, like, what to sign, the arbitration needs to be by law, separate agreement, and, uh, so there's.
Some area.
And.
Yeah.
It's the second.
And just, you know, if truth be told, um, you know, you can explain it to her, generally speaking, our insurance company, the people that.
Yes.
Insist we do this as governmental agency. So, if it seems like overkill to the Marjorie, but I bet she seems to it.
I would hope so, or think so, but. You'd probably look her name up on the Secretary of State's.
Yeah.
Website to see if she in fact is an LLC or incorporated or something.
She has. We have it on her.
All she says is code writer. She doesn't say sole proprietorship partner, but she doesn't have LLC or INC after her name.
No, it doesn't.
So they, it almost looks like sole proprietorship.
Could be.
Okay, done. We're ten minutes early.
Well, I'm glad.
Oh.
No, no, because we have two people here who need to leave at eight fifteen.
So, fun quickly here, our reports and updates, Mark, do you have it, oh no, uh, highway grants and contracts, Stan?
Yes, yes, uh, let's see, uh, as you know, uh, let's see, who's got the contract for, oh, here's the contract for AS Clark. Um, Mark is taking care of the twenty twenty-three fiscal year grants and aid uh, work. So, we don't have to create an RFP, matter of fact, he's almost done with that work from discussion we had this morning to just to be up to date on this.
So, right.
Uh, he's progressed along that, if you're up on Hill Road, uh, either taking Curse Road or going down Hill Road to the south, you'll see that there's a lot of gravel on the road, which he's kinda, I don't know if you graded it per se, or whether you're smoothing it out, but you're in the process of doing that.
Right, yeah, we, uh, the, the issue was, the, the road was flat surface. Uh, water was actually running down tire tracks, it needed, uh, gravel to create running, so that the water can't get in and put it in. And then, the second half of the project will be the stone lining of the runouts. And so I have another couple days of cleaning out the runouts to ensure that the water goes away from the road and is, uh, refined through the five to eight inch ditch when it's repainted.
So, yeah, and stuff, it's on key.
Yeah.
So that will all go well, we, we have the, the next, the twenty twenty-four, which is only uh, uh, it's less than twelve-five, it's, I think it's ten thousand for that, and we've got till September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four to address that, so we don't even need to deal with that right now, other than knowing it exists.
And this will bring us up to, uh, percentage of, uh, segments need to be completed by a certain date.
Yeah, yeah. And so those, those are two, I'm trying to think, there's anything else that, in terms of loan, highway loans that we're dealing with, I can't think of anything, the next question is contracts. And I have here a contract that needs to be dated and signed, that was sent to AS Clark two Fridays ago. Uh, when Clark executed it, he signed the W nine, he stopped, he, uh, signed a non-employee agreement, he signed the whole harmless agreement. And what we need to do is same two pages that we just signed on the contract for Mrs. Ray, we need to insert today's date, and then we have those two pages assigned, I can send him the copy to the signed pages for his records. So, if I put in the second of August in a pen.
I'm gonna get my.
Oh, man.
And.
I've got five of them there.
That's five of them, five.
Right, that's right, we're, we're, we're old enough to get as many posters, I know.
Well, I didn't get it in the pool, because, because Grace College only had Pfizer, I thought all the Germans, I mean, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, we went to.
We went to Brattleboro.
We went to Rest, Rest.
Oh, yeah, they were up here a while back, I didn't tap into it.
So we had to, we had to wait until we came back, that's when we, we had to talk.
These are the two signature pages that require signature.
I'll be feeling better tomorrow, I hope.
I don't come around now, the headaches.
What's the word?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, I had a hard time with those.
The headache, I called twice every day, oh, I love that you have a lot of fun, but this one boy, the headaches. Oh my God, I never get headaches, all day, and then I had to go to with a solid waist with Monster, no, not the Monster Tomorrow Log on my.
Yeah.
I will, uh, I will, uh, go home and copy those pages into the original that's on the computer, I will then bring this paperwork back either tomorrow or Friday and leave it in the selectmen's cabinet along with the other contracts to be filed away.
The contracts copied to the treasurer too?
Uh, yes, I, I send the, I've already, I think I've already sent both of these contracts to the treasurer and the assistant treasurer.
Oh.
For their records, it would be the signature pages that I would be sending to them as well as when.
Uh, you can tell I used to be treasurer.
Yeah, yes, so, so with that, with that, that we've just done that, this is basically finalized. We have nothing further in documentation to follow up, I've been waiting for them to do the job. And with that, I think, unless we get on to other topics, I'm done with my section.
Okay, all right, Bruce, uh, Sunny Lane, no, Suzie's Little Peanuts, big here, meeting.
I just wanna say something else before I end, just, as let's do a select course, very quickly, not even a minute. Patty and I have been going to Marvel Music Festival every week since the middle of July, three times, and it's been great. Ride there two-thirty, seven by four-thirty, and we get all the brochures all the time, so just sort of bring one, I get one of those. John showed if you said, and we couldn't be, hey, it's been great, this guy Jonathan Disit plays piano played solidly for a, for an hour with no freaking music, I walked out. Not a flaw, but anyway, classical music's beautiful, thank you for the thanks, and I get my tickets first weekend, we've gotten row two and row three sick tickets, because as soon as they opened up in March, they're like giddy bucks for a pair, for the whole season. Just wanted to share that with you, if anyone is interested, I brought that in there for people, so we'll get.
Okay.
Okay, now on to the important shit, stuff. Okay, I'm gonna back up, I'm gonna start around schoolhouse kids. Um, as long as I'm feeling okay tomorrow, uh, Mark and I have tentatively had an agreement to he's gonna come over and get my forty-three-year-old beautiful toy.
Are you gonna road to tell it this week, okay?
Tomorrow.
All right, cause then I'll get the mulch and the fabric out then, yeah.
Okay, uh, that's it for the round schoolhouse.
Okay, yeah.
Brook, Brookline Meeting House, I have two things I wanted to speak to about that, one of them has with, some of the party, and one of them was that mold thing that you sent through that I'm getting real nervous about, so I'm gonna make a suggestion, we don't have to put any more payouts or anything to the, to that church until we have a sense of priority, it seems like we're all over the place with spending money on that. We didn't have the painting go through that last year, we have a bit of a delay on the, on the foundation work, I think it's it would be tight-knit over this, I guess I'm trying to say in a nice way.
I would, I read it too, and I had the exact same reaction, plus what I also thought is, we should maybe take, take the initiative and communicate to the meeting house committee.
Okay.
That with, with the work the Energy Commission, the Energy Committee is doing, that some of this may come under doable stuff, that we don't have to, you know, that, that will get paid for if we get assessment money. Not assess, you know, we're gonna do a separate assessment already, that's not gonna cost anything.
Correct.
And, well, all right.
You're talking, you're talking for those.
Yeah, no, I'm talking beyond the four thousand.
Are you talking about?
The next step is the building assessment, and we put the meeting house on for assessments. And so when I looked at this mold remediation, which to me seemed very vague.
Hmm.
And it's also based on hours and time, and that's like an open-ended contract. I did not like it.
Yeah, I have some questions.
I, I don't mind, I have a sign from the Refining EAS Committee as a, the first. I don't mind, however, contacting Leanne through email, and she's on vacation this week, but telling her that, that we're not going to follow through on, on the mold remediation assessment, is that what I'm hearing, and that.
There are maybe other, there may be addition, there may be other funds.
Avenue.
The avenues for funding this.
Was this related to the eighteen thousands, this entirely of the people, and where these, where this J and R, wherever they're doing most of it.
This is through the assessment of John Sacrapo.
Oh, is that the guy?
The guy, we got the grant for, for the, yes, this is the man.
And Eve advised this mold, this architect.
Yes.
Coming with a sheet.
Yeah, Stan?
I thought that this fellow was to provide the same building analysis that the other guy provided.
Which was, what was his name?
Lewandowski.
Lewandowski.
Jan.
Jan Lewandowski, now, where did that report go, or is that the report?
It has not been.
Yes, that looks like a sales job to me.
This is.
Yes, it was.
Creation too.
Uh, and I concur with every statement been made around the table.
I met that man when he came over, uh, to the meeting house, and I, I think I was impressed.
That was not the purpose of that. Yeah. Look, see, it was, I mean, that was one of the aspects, but not the, the whole thing.
Right, yeah, and additionally, we've done mold remediation on their building, and so until we get to the.
I don't understand the.
You know.
The difficult thing of understanding how to get rid of mold in a big building, am I being stupid here? I don't think so. And I was, I was unlucky, it was by accident, that I wasn't invited to these, to the eighteen thousand dollars.
Supposed to be in the look for all of this.
I know, I got, that's been straightened out, I got that, but still, I didn't see what the last person, the coach, uh, uh, cause they walked through the whole building, I wasn't there, I would have liked to have seen that, but, okay, I'll move on.
No, no.
Oh, one more thing about the, about the, about the church, during the party that concerned me, when I was sitting towards the back with kids going up into the balcony and bending over the balcony.
Ooh.
I think what we should do, my suggestion, is a sign on the door.
I did have a sign made for nobody upstairs.
Or whatever, under sixteen, cause they were hanging right, takes one little. Oh.
I've got it.
Yeah. We're getting, I think that's like a fifteen-foot drop.
Yeah.
Or twelve, thirteen.
Yeah, that would not have been pretty.
No, it wouldn't have, that would have totally ruined that whole day.
Daily liability.
Yeah, okay, now the daycare.
So I, I thought the daycare, that we decided they were gonna come to a select board meeting, but there wasn't gonna be.
We changed it.
Special meeting.
Oh.
We changed. Would not have been a forum that would have made it, yeah, so I give.
What'd you say, Stan?
It, it, it would have been. It it would have been extended, as it is, it almost went forty forty five.
Okay.
It was an hour and thirty five minutes.
Hour and thirty five minutes. Okay.
We were within an hour and thirty.
Nothing that would have been reasonably resolved.
Yeah, I realized after what we talked about that this isn't gonna be resolved in a ten minute discussion in a twenty minute.
So let's get to it.
I'm working on it. It's almost done. Okay. We had this meeting for an hour and thirty five minutes. Let's see this, and you can interject some of the things that were discussed. First of all, we made a point clear the deviation of responsibilities between us, me, Mark. And them. Anything I do, and I just did something. They understand now. If I do something that isn't a part of the responsibility part, because she. Threw it at me, Olivia. Well, you've done it before, like change the change the light bulbs. Well, you have to understand. I did, we did, I did, we did, the town did, by the goodness of our heart. This isn't a responsibility of the town. So we we talked about this, made a point clear then, and I just took away all that plastic behind it. Behind the uh building today, took down the quidditch all away. So only cost twenty bucks because I already built it. It was no big deal. Like my money back from, it wasn't happy to help when I can. They do understand. That I don't do any more work on the building anymore. So I also took it, what I thought was an emergency situation. And covered it, I covered a um, covered a uh. Covered a heat duct that was exposed. The cap was off of it of the uh of the uh hardware baseboard. Because they were putting kids right there and they were complaining, oh, we don't have a cap on it. I went over there for some nice rigid hard. Cardboard, cardboard and got it all set. So Mark doesn't know this yet. And I haven't very easily retrofitted a piece of metal. To replicate the end cap that's missing where I went. I don't have any clue. Maybe you can ask Coda Coda because we're in the. Her twenty one visits a year before that list, which leads me into another thing. Coda and Coda is coming on. I'm trying to speed along. I guess you could notice the seventeenth, they are going to drain the water from the air to air, the air changes in the basement up top. So we never had that issue again. Done. Um, let me see what else. We basically, oh, I can probably go into more about what went on with that discussion. They said that they've been in the last six months thirty thousand dollars in the hole.
I that's not. I would refrain from that kind of a disclosure in public.
Oh, I'm wrong. Okay, that's what she said.
Don't strike that.
She said that though.
Yeah, we don't need to go there.
Okay, well, whatever, whatever. It's not that important really. But what the important part was that she also said almost in the same breath. That we have every intention of resigning the lease uh or recommitting to the lease at the end of next year. Um, let me see, what else?
They they understand the lease and the the letter I sent?
Yes, they they couldn't argue. You were so specific with it, with what they want to do next time for the lease is they'll want to sit down and discuss the lease again. Uh, Mr. Nova was on the, after we had a little talk afterwards, under the feeling that they thought that they were. I'm not gonna use your words, hugely paraphrasing, that um. That Olivia was given the intention that she wanted to have the rent decrease next time. Yeah, was which her feeling was.
There there was expressed a connection between the fact that we had spent a lot of money on the building to date. To bring it up to make up for all the neglect that it had received in the past. And that now we had spent that money. There's no need for the town to maintain the level of. The rental fee that we've been. Increasing by, uh, so there, it was implying that they were expecting a reduction in. The rent fee.
I think they're missing.
And so we, I mentioned to them that. The costs that were incurred by the town in no way influences what the lease payment is. It was purely a matter of market rent. And and Bruce elaborated on the fact that he had. Confessed with a real estate broker about what was appropriate and emphasized the fact that they. Currently are not paying what is market rent. They're paying below market rent. So. I think the any concept of getting any reductions in the immediate future is no longer. A concept they might be gravitating toward.
There's also, this one point has come up twice. Several years ago, I saw Olivia said it, and Stephanie asked me at this meeting. Does the rent money have to go back into the lease money have to go back into the building? And the answer to that is no. And they understand it completely. So everything that stands has to say plus that that thrown in as well. So it was a good change. I thought it was a really good one.
I just wanted to say they should be seeing a reduction in.
They did acknowledge that they are experiencing a reduction. I did have a sense, frankly, that there was a little bit of contentiousness there. Uh, it it I had the clear impression that if there's a way of reducing. Uh, either responsibilities or uh the uh lease fee, they would certainly like to have that done. Uh, but that was dealt with tactfully and indicated that that is not gonna happen. Uh, I think there was a little bit of um negativeness mildly. To their receipt of explanations, reminding them of what the lease in fact says. Uh, and uh, and they, after we indicated what is their responsibility and what is ours. Uh, near the very end of the meeting, they asked about three different things. They started down a path of, well, we have a railing that was left over from. The prior tenant that is not in good repair. Is that something that's their responsibility or something that's our responsibility? And not even listening to the other stuff because we know that you're you're right. I remember looking at the clocks and God, we've been here almost an hour. I I I wasn't clear about wanting them to elaborate on what it was. So I said, look. Uh, neither Bruce nor myself are here to pinpoint specific things. If you've got issues that you are concerned about, email it to us, which is what they did. I don't know if you all got this. I guess you did. So you maybe had a chance to look at it. Nothing great. What's that list of things that I asked of the email?
I'll answer directly. I went over, looked at it, and I was under the feeling when we rebuilt the stairs that the railings would hold up. For on infant. No, one actually broke up the block. So I, before you told Mark, Mark's gonna go, he's gonna change all four railings to each. The north door and the south door because they're all cracked and they're, they're gonna eventually go and it's really nominal kind of stuff. And each each railing takes about three minutes to replace. So it's not a big expense.
Now, now you're.
I don't know the answer to this one.
Yeah, they're missing coding, copying what you were saying. Alexa was.
Okay, okay. So 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 what you're saying is no to the three?
No, no, what I did was.
It was, it's been fixed.
I'm just going to be fixed.
Did they know that this is, is this a temporary in your opinion, or is it? It's, I mean, a permanent fix, but.
No, they understand.
That this is the one time.
Yeah, but you're not being clear in a way, Stan. If it's related to the building. And something that's that breaks on the building, I believe it's our responsibility.
Like a dishwasher, a toilet, a uh.
I don't know about a dishwasher.
Right.
We have a dishwasher that breaks. I thought we already fixed it. I thought we already.
Uh, we forgot. We spent a hundred dollars on a drain one time.
All right.
I think electrical portable water, um, but but things like changing lights is not really our responsibility at all.
Yeah, and anybody said that tonight. Is there, what about these three items?
Name them.
Wall splitting rail going into the gym.
That, I don't know what that is. She's gonna show me tomorrow. But the wallpaper, we're gonna look at it and see. But that I don't see is where that's our responsibility unless and the other one was.
You've got this too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the third.
You can read it.
Wallpaper, broken railing, and a splinter. So this is all that goes without.
Nothing, nothing. So you you don't mind doing it again and again? You think the headquarters, okay, doing it? We're almost quarter out.
Well, why not? You're cutting me off. I look at it as a case to case basis. If I think we can do something reasonable, I wanna do it, or Mark's willing to do it, that's one thing. But they do understand the differentiation of responsibility. You're uncomfortable with it, but I've been doing this for a long time and.
I think a general is something that we need to fix. It's broken.
Yes.
Yeah, in the building.
And another thing is, you know, like the end cap on the on the on the radiator, this is something that is a part of the building. That's our responsibility. But not changing light bulbs, not doing all this other crap. But last point, we have minimized the maintenance in this building. To the point of nothing, which is a good thing. So basically, when it comes down to it, the building's done, except for circumstances like when. Cast iron pipe pipes blow, but nothing you can do about that.
I did notice there's a dumpster in the back.
Really? More stuff inside? So they got it today.
Is there anything on this agenda that you would like to discuss very quickly before you go?
Yeah, I'd like to know what's going on with the mower.
The mower was being the uh the attachment for that had been manufactured to fit the excavator was being manufactured in Pennsylvania. And it should be delivered this weekend.
I'm waiting for a phone call to say it's coming in because I have to be here to set a pitch.
I'm gonna call them as well. Okay.
And I I bring it up because when we were at the town party, uh, there was an individual who was complaining about the road.
So.
But that's, yeah, I I agree with that too, but yeah.
It'll be the last time there'll be a complaint.
Anything else? One.
I sent, I sent everybody the sample of Melissa's.
Yes.
Reorganized chart of accounts. And a next meeting, we, she's. She has gotten, Nemrick has said, once she gives them the the go ahead, they can reorganize her accounts. Um, in a much nicer fashion, um, but it's to the tune of three hundred dollars, which I sounded quite reasonable.
So what should, I'll put it on the next agenda to vote.
That's what I mean, chart of accounts. The the chart of accounts reorder, yeah, okay. And basically what this does, our counts, our counting, our counting numbers are so out of date. That when you add new counts, you can't always put them in sequential order. This, here, Mark, I'll give you mine. You can see this is just one inch. And up, and it'll give us more flexibility to add sub accounts and to group certain expenses together and a lot more details. Okay.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Be safe. You can know the eight fifteen at the tomorrow and fall, uh, accuse themselves from the meeting for previous engagement. Okay, um. All right, so the Sunny Lane daycare meeting review went well. The meeting handles no mold settlements. Um, and and the church and the Mount Schoolhouse are gonna road to sale, then I'll staple the mulch delivery. Anything else?
Nothing. We're we're about done. We're done with, other than the, other than the wood out back, which you're gonna get to when we get to it. That building's done and controlled. Now we have no maintenance, basically. Now we take the air handles there. Um, so that's a beautiful thing. Um, and go ahead.
And your next is on energy commission. I know you have a meeting on August eighteenth, correct?
Yes, but I also talked to Katie Buckley the other day, and she would like, and I have expressed this to the energy committee, that she and. She said her name was Ellen Body. The two people want to meet with our energy committee. To see what we want to do as far as things to spend, spend money. She's gonna, she's gonna guide us. I spent a lot of time talking with her in the last week. And this woman knows all a lot. She even did the entire Irene FEMA work uh back in Hilton. Before she went up with V L C T. So she's got expansive background, but she's gonna help us in concert with Wyndham Regional. To um identify things that we can do with the energy committee in terms of uh energy upgrades to the buildings.
Excellent.
That's all I have now because we have not a meeting.
Okay, all right, then move on to my report. Uh, I did get a phone call last week when I was away from the energy control officer in Brattleboro. Actually, that there was a reported dog bite where a dog, neighbor's kid went over to a neighbor's house and and was bitten. Uh, haven't gotten anything back from the health department, from the hospital. Uh, I don't have any of the other details. We've been texting back and forth and and. I have to give her a phone call or email. Uh, I'm gonna try to find out. How, why she was called and not me, because the vets all called me and the police usually call me, but. Uh, so she got called. Hopefully, maybe we'll be able to add into the budget that uh she be our A C O in the future years. Uh, the next item was the town party on the July twenty sixth. It was a great success. Uh, there was a total donation, cash donation received from various sources. Including raffles of two thousand six hundred dollars, um, including nineteen hundred dollars from the musicians themselves. Uh, so that went very, very well. Uh, they had a, Mr. Cutler gave a stipend to the musicians for travel. And uh nineteen hundred dollars of best stipend was returned to the donation to the church. So very, very generous. All right, town party, um. Um, I just also wanted to say, I know under email, but I'm gonna bring it up here. I, the guy sent me this. Um, and it was, I'm not sure if I've seen this, and I didn't see it. It says, Dear Dot and the Brookline Community from Rachel Shields. Brattleboro, Brattleboro Development Board. It says, I'm reaching out to invite you to submit the Round Schoolhouse Memorial Garden Project. And the Meeting House Restoration Project for inclusion in the annual update of the two thousand nineteen twenty to two thousand twenty three. Southern Vermont Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. You may not think of your project as economic development, but it is exactly things like this that work together to add up to a vibrant regional economy. Projects can be physical improvements to facilities and infrastructures, community programs from summer camps to workplace initiatives. Any in any stage from planning to implementation previously submitted, updates are valued, so on to. Having your project listed in the C E D S is a great way to make sure potential funders and collaborators know about it. While the inclusion of the project in the C D E S does not guarantee any future investment, it does indicate to federal, state and Philip. Federal public funders that the project is aligned with the regional economic and community development goals. This annual process also ensures regional and statewide organizations have a complete, clear understanding of Southern Vermont projects and works underway. It's required, it's likely already on hand. If you're seeking or planning to seek grant funding for your project, this one can be saved to come back to later. So. I'm gonna follow up on it and let you know about just registering the R two bill, the Round Schoolhouse Garden. And the Meeting House Updates in a Program. Maybe we, there might be some additional funding, but that name then. For that, um, also the town party, we, you, the board recently granted a budget of a thousand dollars to cover some of the expenses. I believe I won sixteen dollars over uh budget, um, but I do have, everything has been uh set up. I uh, I think we spent ten, one thousand nineteen dollars and forty six. So there you go.
Pretty good guest donation.
Yes, pretty good guest donation. Pleased with that. Also wanted to make note to the committee that the uh letter that went out after the, that didn't get included with the tax bill. But went out online and through Julie uh looking for donations to the cemetery committee. We did receive two donations for a total of two hundred dollars for the cemetery committee, which I will let them know at uh as well. So that was also something.
You stayed on that too, or you're gonna?
Right, I'm elected to that one right now.
Oh, that's right.
So I'll probably.
Next year.
It's like two years, yeah. Um, so budget twenty twenty two, twenty three review at some point, we should put this on an agenda. Maybe not for August, but I do want, when Samara's here, you know, look at where we're at and how how close we did come to our plan. And then develop, talk about in the future, the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget development. So that would be to be. Done at another meeting, but I just wanted to say that that's something that's in our way.
Yeah, the two of them are working on it pretty good.
Yes.
Anyway.
Um. And she wants cemetery. I also am talking about, um, Samara wanted to talk about. Um, and she wants cemetery. I also, um, talking about, um, Samara wanted to talk about uh, the assistant, select, select board assistant and so on and so forth. And I I said, you know, I said, I'm very grateful you do what you do for the building and what you've been doing for grants and contracts and Paul's doing the nine one one and Samara's taking an eye on the budget. If we could get and if we have other volunteers like Oliver that's getting involved in the planning, that's what makes light of the work. As far as additional secretarial work, I was thinking maybe every six weeks or so, we could ask Sherry Green to come back and refile things that we have put in that because she knows the file system.
Wow.
So that, you know, and many, yeah, for kind of thing, but that, but again, sure, if we want to talk about hiring someone, I don't know four thousand dollars a year is going to really.
Did she move back in town?
No. Make somebody, no, she's in Townsend.
Oh, she's.
By Grace Park and Grace Cottage. All right. So that's neither here nor there. Um, at this time, I'll go back to uh, highway supervisor. Mark, do you have anything you'd like to share with us? I know we've already talked about it.
Yeah, I know. Just working on all the existing uh, projects and you're going good at this point.
Uh, Stan, I know, um, you had some items on your list. We still have some time we can talk about it that, um, you had emailed and I wouldn't get it into the agenda. It wasn't a voteable thing, but yeah, let's let's run through that list.
I think the the most, most of these things we've pretty much touched on. The only one that I think really probably is may come to be, which isn't really on this list, is that we should be getting that hundred and ten thousand dollar check tomorrow or Friday to go over and buy the uh, four wheeled excavator. So the question is, since we're on a per diem, is it something? I'm going to take a trip over and sign documents. I don't know if anyone else is you as a select board chair to save as many dollars as possible so that we walk out with the certificate, the purchase and sale agreement and the form that we need to file the next day, if not that same day, at the registry of motor vehicles to have the lien noted for the state and have ownership of it and you know, so I didn't know if anyone's interested in doing that. It's going to involve the difference, the sixty two five to be available in a check in addition to the check we're going to get from the state, of course. So I don't know if we need to give the treasurer and assistant treasurer forewarning that this is what we like to do or should we make it Monday or 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 it's just mail? Uh, and I just am looking for ideas and thoughts on what everyone else is thinking.
Ah, I did talk to Alta and they said that they would adjust the billing to the date that we are able to purchase since we're there. They were not offering, they were, we were not accepting their financing. So we could call Bobby up and say, you know, we have it here. We're going to, I don't know how to do it.
Are they going to give us the discount upfront? How's that?
I noticed that the new Alta bill is in the treasurer book. It must have come today for the next month's payment. So uh, they will adjust.
The cost.
The cost based upon the date of title transfer.
Yeah, so.
So when you're saying it's a day, you're saying going up to Alta to deliver the check?
Yes, to to and and come back with all the paperwork.
Ah.
So and not not trust the mail that it may get lost or something like that.
Take a ride and do that with you?
And uh, and not only that, but you know, it'll, I don't, I haven't figured out what the per diem is, but it'll save the whatever that per diem.
Three days of travel.
That check, if that request for payment, I don't know what day that crosses. But if we can hit it on an even date and not even have to deliver a check for sixty five hundred to then negotiate the rebate or figure out the rebate at the table there, that would be really ideal.
All right. So the, so where are we at? So we're like, once the check comes in, Guy will call, uh, call you.
I hope so. I will email him tonight.
All right. And you call me and then we'll make our phone calls. We'll, 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 we have to do and get our ducks in a row.
This is not one seventy two five. It's less.
Okay, well, whatever it will be, you want to make sure.
It should be ninety three and less, but I think we got that right.
Yes, seventy percent of thirteen thousand.
Okay, so we'll be good then. All right, um. Yes, I have.
So that was, that that basically is the only thing.
Yeah.
Uh, we already talked about the dump truck. We already talked about the planning committee. Uh, we already talked about the contracts. You're calling Baz and we already have Clark's uh, the website we already dealt with and there's a, we we know how we're going to deal with the contracts. The FEMA supervisor, as I, I don't know if I emailed everybody. I thought I, in one of the meetings I had, I did. Uh, and uh, and that guy was, I won't say useless, but it was obvious. He was a face of FEMA. So that FEMA had uh, someone that had gone around and talked with all the towns. He had no specific knowledge virtually about anything. What he did offer was the 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 upgrade, the lifting of the house two feet possibly and uh, and and moving utilities to the first floor if it's a scenario where the basement it floods repeatedly and that's where they are. So that was probably among his most helpful things. He didn't really have, I asked him about the uh, um, GPS coordinates. He didn't know who's supposed to take them. So, you know, it just any specific question I asked based on any knowledge that I had of FEMA, he he was not able to answer.
Okay.
So and what he did outline for a general process very much parallels with Kim Kardashian. It made no, yes, for that.
That's not real.
It really is. Karim, Karim, Karim.
Karim.
And uh, she's, yeah. She's she's a sharp lady, uh, that's for sure. But anyway, that's, that's.
Excellent.
We get out early. That'd be great.
Um, any other topics or discussions from the select board?
Thirty five seconds.
Okay. All right. Next we'll go on to uh, communications. Um. Great. Okay, we do have the following here. I do need to read to you a couple of things. I'd like to get into the record that there is an error and omission certificate that needs to be recorded for the town of Brookline. Uh, the dissocio Michael and Susan Span zero nine nine zero three one one zero one two zero has been reduced to eight hundred dollars for the removal of a camping platform from the parcel. It no longer exists as per the owner. And so their uh, assessment has been reduced by eight hundred dollars. So we need to sign off. It has been signed by the lister and then we will sign this. Three of us at least.
It has to be recorded uh, in the, in the front of the grand list that's produced.
But camper gets tanks.
They had a camping platform for a year. And they took it back. And so it's been updated on the form. So how much detail do I need to? Just, just that we we that we acknowledge an error and omission certificate for the Michael and Susan dissocios residence span uh, a reduction of eight hundred dollars. So Michael and Susan, D E capital S O C I O. B or B, D as in David. Um, also wanted to. Oh, this is from, this is from, this is notes from Samara. Never mind. Uh, the town of Putney has noticed an agenda for a hybrid physical Putney Planning Commission. They're having a uh, uh, on Thursday, August twenty fourth at six thirty to eight thirty at Putney Town Hall. I guess they're going over their uh, town plan um, at six thirty. Drafted for their twenty twenty three town plan overview by the commissioners uh, will be presented that night. And so we got an invitation as an adjourning, joining town. And I also got an email or a copy from Guy Tanser that um, Vermont has municipal planning grants up to thirty thousand dollars and or or if you work with another municipality, up to forty five thousand dollars. Um, I'm not, I'm, did you get, did Guy email everybody this? Or just me? Barbara Boar. Oh, no, he sent it to the uh, planning commissioners as well. Never mind. So we all received this for the planning people so that they have that information. That was, you know, and uh, we're going to mail. I can see it. A regular mail was the AS Clark and Sons contract and a return receipt for the uh, documents that you sent to the state. So that was all. Agenda for the next meeting would be to uh, to vote on the reorganization of the chart of accounts to look at any appointments for the planning commission. To truck. That's the third day, I don't know, fourth. Does any other things, well? But figure it out.
Hopefully Baz and brothers will sign the contract.
Okay, contracts. Okay, and um, anything else? We will bring it up closer to that date. All right, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Eight thirty four P M. Exactly. Thank you very much.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.